Morning Housing Authority Board of Directors and over to you Director Harrington.
Good morning and thank you Clerk Moss and welcome everyone to the month of April, but our April 1 Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly Director Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners is now meeting as the Housing Authority Board of Directors for Washington County, meeting this regular session, April 1, 2025. Director Fai?
President.
Director Snyder?
Here.
Director Willy?
Here.
Director Savara?
Here.
Director Harrington?
Here.
I'll announce Director Treese's excuse and we should expect Director Roper at any time.
Great. Do you know if we're expecting her in person or on Zoom?
She communicated yesterday that she'd be in person.
Terrific.
We will keep both options open.
Wonderful. Yes, I know. I mentioned in our work session earlier that I hit every single traffic light, train, bars, and pedestrian signals on my drive in this morning, so I hope she's not having a similar experience. So, the next item on our agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their thoughts with the Housing Authority Board of Directors on any topic as it relates to the housing authority. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
I did not see anyone sign up in advance of the meeting. Would any member in the auditorium wish by public comment to House Authority for up to two minutes, give you a chance to use the raise hand function or in the auditorium? I'm not seeing anyone online or that. And it looks like Director Roper is joining us online momentarily, so no comments. Madam Director.
So, why don't we wait a moment until she gets hooked in electronically?
Can you hear us, Director Roper?
Yes, I can.
Oh, wonderful. Welcome Director Roper.
And I did hear your comment, Chair Harrington. It is April Fool's Day and I do agree with you.
Well, welcome. We have no one who wanted to come and address us during the first public communication, so next we're moving on to our consent agenda. And today's Housing Authority Board of Directors consent agenda consists of one item, and that is the approval of minutes for our January 7, 2025 meeting. What are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve?
Motion.
So Director Roper has made the motion. Director Willy has seconded it. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, 2, 4, 6, 2, 4, 5, 6, to nothing. Just wanted to make sure I got the number right, folks. Thank you very much. Next, we're moving on to presentations. And this is a presentation with regard to the amazing portfolio renovation that our staff have done, so we'd like to welcome them up to the table. For today's presentation. This is a body of work that our staff brought forward to us as the Housing Authority Board of Directors. Two different phases, leveraging private activity bonds so that we could do renovation work on the portfolio of affordable public housing throughout Washington County. And a lot of work has been done by our staff and the building community, so this is our status update. And congratulations on the accomplishment. So I'll turn it over to you, Director Rogers.
Good morning, Habard Director, for, Habard overall Director, sorry. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers and I am the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County, and I use she/her pronouns. And with me today, I have Assistant Director Jill Chen, Real Estate Division Manager Lisa Varan, and Matt Chandry right here, who's a Director of Development with Bronner and Company, and several guests in the audience showcasing the work we have with you today. I'm so thrilled that this is a informational session with you all to show the incredible progress we have made in the transformation of 592 homes across 10 properties. These 10 communities have gone from challenging or distressed properties to community assets, as we can all attest as we drive past Tarkington on our way to the Public Services Building. Today also happens to be April 1, which is the beginning of Fair Housing Month, and I'm thrilled we get to present many, many housing and shelter opportunities that the Department of Housing Services is working on throughout the agenda today. Preservation remains a key strategy for the Housing Authority, and we are pleased to update the board, present this opportunity to celebrate success in rehabbing and extending the useful lives of much of our affordable housing portfolio. Our presentation today will focus on 10 Housing Authority, or what we call HAWK-owned properties, that actually are now converted and owned by two low-income housing tax credit partnerships. We note that these properties, being formally known, owned by Housing Authority, did not have any regulatory restriction expiration risks at the time, where we, but we do have over 1,000 units in Washington County that are set to expire their affordable housing restrictions over the next 10 years. I just wanted to make note of that. But really, these close to 600 homes presented urgent issues needing major rehabilitation of that, and the fact that they were over 40 years old, meaning they were beyond their useful lives. And so our presentation will go through some of the background, challenges, goals accomplished, and next steps, as well as highlight, my favorite, the before and after photos. But first, really, we need to applaud and thank our development consultants Bronner and Company for working with HAWK over these past five years to help us reposition and redevelop the portfolio. We have in the audience, we have Sean McCullough, Michelle Chen, Matt Chandry with us. We've been really lucky to have benefited from Bronner, who specialize in working with housing authorities and occupied rehabs, which is its own unique special snowflakes that we work with because of the balancing of complicated construction schedules and resident needs. So we could not have done this without your support, and you guys have truly gone above and beyond every day in your role for Washington County. And we are lucky for your steady hand in shepherding and juggling 10 properties at once with only one a year in between the two phases, which I'm not sure we would ever do again, but here we are.
You've shown it can be done. So by the way, I hope after this presentation that we'll come back to this slide and all of you will join us with, for a photo opportunity to memorialize this accomplishment.
That's a great idea. And I'm also thrilled to let you know that Bronner is going to continue to help us with our renovation of WoodSpring Apartments and the Metro Aloha 209 project. So big thanks also to Jim Bronner, who's not here, who is the owner, and he has personally made sure we've had financial stewardship of these two partnerships. So just a little bit of quick background, most of these buildings were built in the 1960s, 70s, and 80s, and HAWK acquired them in the 1990s and 2000s, and now are there in need of major renovation. We identified these portfolio concerns because they were not only having capital needs of major replacements of their systems, but they were causing cash flow inadequacies to the department as well. After review of the assets, the Authority developed a strategic repositioning plan that would address all major outstanding capital systems as a one project. So instead of one small project, one unit at a time, or one property at a time, it increased financial and frankly, construction efficiencies. We developed an asset management plan to optimize income and effectively use vouchers. And we defeased the existing county bonds and reduced the burden of oversight of our debt. So everyone was, it was a win-win-win across the board. So we brought, Bronner was brought in to assist in the restructuring of the portfolio and brought in the necessary low-income housing tax credit partnerships to make it all work. And with that, I'm sending it over to Jill.
Thanks so much, Molly. For the record, my name is Jill Chen. I use she/her pronouns. I'm Assistant Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County. As Molly mentioned, we brought in Bronner to help us with the 4% low-income housing tax credits and commercial debt. We brought, we were able to bring in Chase as our lender and Fannie Mae as our equity investor. Construction, it took a while to, you know, work with our portfolio, but we closed the first phase, financially closed in June 2022, and it's now completed the construction. We're in the final stages of, it's fully leased up, we're in the final of stabilization. Phase two, we closed, financially closed December 2023, and we anticipated to close, to finance, not financially, to finish construction in July of 2025. So in just a few more months. Total construction cost alone was over $100 million, and we were able to repay 26.7 million to the county, 26.7 million total, 22.2 million to the county. As you can see from the earlier slides, we had some major, major rehabilitation needs. There was safety and fire life safety issues, ADA compliance issues, energy efficiency, water intrusion. Major system replacement included anything from sewer line and waste line replacements, as well as roofing, siding, windows. In the interior, you'll see later, we had some new flooring, cabinets, tub and showers, and new lighting. And frankly, this work could not have been done without Bronner's help in order to really create the long-term sustainability and the creation of our continuation of our communities. We did want to highlight a couple of challenges. The first and foremost was this tremendous rise in the interest rates, we all know. When the project closed, in the initial closing in June 2022, interest rates were around 5.62%. This was, I mean, it was under 1%, and then it went up to 5.62%. This increased the cost tremendously, and we had, in essence, to carry that cost with Bronner and work to make sure that everything could come as completed. Another challenge was the Aloha Park fire. In October of 2022, as LMC, our contractor, was building out Aloha Park, there was a fire in which one of the buildings, nine of the 12 units you can see, was completely burned, and we needed to go through the process with insurance, reconstruction, abatement, the whole works, and bring that building up to current code. I did want to shout out to our friends in land use and transportation, for without their support and their help with the permitting, and especially Derek Moon and his whole team, we would not be able to bring this to financial close. With that, we were able to actually bring everything and not lose any tax credit equity or any delays in moving the people into their homes before Christmas. Sorry, I'm still trying to learn this. In terms of background and the properties, as you'll see, and as Molly mentioned, the properties in Phase 1 and Phase 2 was throughout Washington County. In Phase 1, we, you can see in the blue dots, that covered 332 units, and in the orange dots, we covered 260 units. So all the assets, the larger assets, were combined in these two tax credit partnerships and resyndicated to bring in over $100 million. We blended some of the smaller properties with the larger ones, like Holly Tree was combined with, say Cornelius, and we had some of the larger projects like Bonita, working with Villager, so that those were combined to make it more efficient, as Molly mentioned. And I wanted to make sure that without further ado, I turn it over to Matt, who can go through some of the slides so you can see some of the before and after photos.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners, thank you. As mentioned, my name is Matt Chandry, Director of Development with Bronner and Company. And we've been privileged and thrilled to be a part of this project and to see the transformation. I get the fun part here, which is to show some before and after photos and to see the transformation that happened for these buildings, which, you know, are part of the community and serving the residents and many of the most vulnerable residents in our, in our community. And so, they say a picture is worth a thousand words, and I think some of these will speak to that. We see some of the before and after. Bonita Villa was built in the early 60s. This probably needed the most amount of renovation. This renovation took the buildings down to the studs and rebuilt them. And you can see from the photos here on just the exterior that it really, this renovation brought new life to these buildings and ensured that they're going to serve these populations, this population for many, many years to come. The renovation included, of course, new siding, windows, roofing, paint, rebuilt decks, site accessibility. On the interior, again, you know, select renovation on the interior of some of the buildings at some of the properties, but typically included, you know, cabinets and flooring, sinks, appliances. Aloha Park before and after, again, not only changing out some of the old building systems on the envelope in particular, but modernizing them and making them, you know, look new and modern and fresh, making it a place that people can really feel proud to call their home, including, oh, sorry, going back here, new playgrounds for children. Again, here's some typical finishes before and after. Villager, again, you know, spending the, spending the time to understand the existing condition and then renovating with these new building systems to make sure that they're going to last the term of the financing in place. Holly Tree might be one of my more favorite transformations that happened. You know, 140, 42 units here at Holly Tree, interior and exterior, I think some of the site work that was done and the interior common space improvements that were completed really just makes such a difference for this property. I mean, you can look, you know, looking down these hallways here, you know, adding some color and texture, really brings some new life to it. I love the new entry into the building here, kind of a more modern feel, and it's just a really, really neat transformation. Maryland, you know, sometimes some of these buildings might be, might be smaller and less, less flashy just by, by the way that they, they're situated, but, but I feel like the renovation done here at Maryland really makes them, makes it pop, makes it look new and refreshed. Again, the, you know, interior finishes made a dramatic difference in the living condition for our residents here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa. I will just, while I still have the microphone for one more second, the Housing Authority should be applauded for, for their leadership and efforts in, in making this happen. These sorts of things don't happen without tremendous leadership, and it's been a thrill to work with the Housing Authority and their fantastic team. Molly, Jill, and Lisa and their staff are really doing a fantastic job on, on leading the organization and making sure that these sorts of things are happening in the community. And it's been a real thrill to work with them.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Varan. I'm the Real Estate Division Manager. I use she/her pronouns. I'm thrilled to be here today. I can't take a lot of credit for this because I've only been in this job about nine months, but coming into this project midstream, I saw that not only did it involve the people you see here at the table, but our Housing Authority Rental Assistance Division team, we call them the RAD team because they are RAD, and they really, they worked very hard to get, get households into this project and into the assistance programs that helped buoy the financial state of these buildings. And I also want to acknowledge our asset management team that also worked on helping us meet qualified occupancy with our property management companies, Cascade and Key. So it has been a, it has been an effort that has involved quite a few groups, and we achieved 100% qualified occupancy for AHP4 by the end of the year last year. So we met that threshold requirement. We're now looking to meet our threshold requirements for, for our conversion to perm on that project. And big picture, we've, we've addressed the deferred maintenance and capital needs for 592 units. We've preserved those units and stabilized them for hundreds of lower-income residents. We've also stabilized the property itself, aside from those units, the properties themselves, aside from those units that are unoccupied due to renovations. We've been achieving a 93% to 95% occupancy, sometimes even up to 97% occupancy in, in the portfolio. We've added long-term affordability restrictions to all 10 properties, and of course, we've defeased the 22 million in county bonds. So all this is very exciting. And in terms of next steps, we've, we've completed construction and qualified occupancy for AHP4, so now we're moving forward to convert to its permanent operations sometime this quarter. In quarter three, we're looking at finalizing the construction for AHP Phase 2. And in September, we're planning on having a celebration, and we look forward to inviting you and having you join us. You'll be hearing from our communications team about possible dates, and it really will be a celebration, so we're excited about that. And then, then we'll move into stabilization, and by the end of this year, we will be converting to perm for AHP Phase 2. So 2025 is a big year for these projects and really a great opportunity to close a chapter and start a new one on the life of these buildings. And, and really, as, as I heard, as I heard recently, it's, it's, it's the lives of the people in the buildings, right, that, that we're also changing and supporting. Any questions, follow-up?
No, I think this is, this has just been a, an ambitious program through these two phases. I know that the board has had the honor of each of the steps that you needed to take us through in order to set this opportunity up and support you during all phases of this work. We're, I know we are all very proud of you, so thank you for giving us the overview today. Go ahead, Director Snyder.
Thank you. Just very briefly, I watched firsthand the work on a daily basis at a couple of these sites, just because of the proximity to where I live. In my prior role, and it was amazing how quickly things happened. I mean, it was a very efficient and very clearly thought-through plan. In my prior role, as an elected official, as mayor of Tigard, I got a lot of feedback about concerns about the properties that were in Tigard that were owned by the Housing Authority. In fact, probably honestly more complaints per unit than any other site. And, and frankly, the conditions were concerning, and I guess that's going to drive what I'm going to say now, which is that I realize probably none of you or me will be in our roles in 30 years or 40 years when these facilities are probably going to be in a similar condition again. My question would be, how do we avoid that? And how do we set up for success around that now, knowing that none of us are necessarily going to be in those roles? But let's not let it get that way again, would be my ask, and not just obviously in the Tigard properties, but I'm sure the conditions were the same everywhere. I just happened to hear about those. But that, that would just be an ask of mine or a challenge I would give. I don't think that, you know, you're not going to fix that today or respond to it, but I think we do need to think about that so that, you know, the life cycle of financing, et cetera, doesn't reflect the reality of the people that are living in the facilities. Yes, there's a loan and financing that goes for a time period, but, you know, 25 years from now, the people in those units should not be living in the conditions that I saw five years ago. Thank you for making this happen. It's incredible work.
Anyone else? Okay, well, if we could go back to the early slide, one, two, slide three, and all gather up here. Anyone involved with this program, please join us. And if we could slide our cameras over so that Director Roper can be part of our photo to the degree possible?
Yeah, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there in person to take this picture with you guys.
It's okay, Director Roper. We're getting in here.
I definitely would like to see a picture of this.
So for those of you in the auditorium who are gathering for the Washington County Board of Commissioners and CWS Board of Directors meeting, we are still in our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, and we have a couple more items of business. The next one is a public hearing related to some of our Public Housing Agency plans. Oh, and welcome, our team is already set up. Please take it away.
Thank you Chair Harrington and Board of Directors for this opportunity, for the public hearing of our 2025 Public Housing Agency Plan, as well as our annual plan and Moving to Work supplement. For the record, I am Jill Chen, Assistant Director of the Housing Authority, and I use she/her pronoun, and with me is M. Nichols, Moving to Work Coordinator. For the purpose of this meeting, we just wanted to make sure that we have reviewed the Housing Authority's proposed five-year Public Housing Agency Plan, and this is to meet the regulatory requirements for public hearing, for the Housing Authority Board approval prior to our submission to housing and urban development for our plan. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to M. Nichols.
Good morning, Directors and Chair Harrington. I'm M. Nichols. I'm the Moving to Work Coordinator for the Department of Housing Services. I support Housing Authority policy and planning. My pronouns are they and she. We'll go over the PHA plan, some highlights from our progress report, and also give a little bit more focused attention to our Moving to Work waiver requests. These represent the substantive changes to how we will be conducting PHA business. The important component here is also our public hearing, which satisfies our regulatory requirements for plan review. which satisfies our regulatory requirements for plan review. The five-year plan is a strategic document that is updated, as you'd expect, every fifth year, years ending in zero and five. It describes our Housing Authority's mission and goals. And it can be updated during the annual planning cycle as needed. Our annual plan is updated each year. It includes information on our Moving to Work activities and also PHA operations, programs, and services. Our Moving to Work Supplement is an attachment to the annual plan. Moving to Work is a demonstration that gives public housing authorities like ours flexibility to design local strategies for program cost and efficiency, family self-sufficiency, and increased housing choice. The Moving to Work Supplement document describes how we use those flexibilities in detail. These documents have already gone through a fairly extensive review process that started in November with consultation with our Resident Advisory Board. Our Resident Advisory Board did final review and approval on March 24th. The Housing Advisory Council reviewed and recommended submission to HUD on March 27th. We have held a public meeting for our agency-specific Moving to Work waiver on February 20, 2025, and we received positive comments at that time from the public. We've also had a 45-day public comment period between January 29th and March 17th. The plan has been reviewed by our local Office of Community Development. Our five-year progress, you've heard a little bit of our exciting work in the previous item. We have expanded our special purpose voucher capacity by over 60%. That's 246 additional vouchers, emergency housing vouchers, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing vouchers, and Foster Youth to Independence Initiative. We've increased our project-based vouchers, over 294 new units under contract since 2020. And those are adding to the financial stability of over 1,800 affordable housing units in our county. The Housing Authority has also partnered to administer the Regional Long-Term Rental Assistance Program, ARLA, currently assisting 1,600 households. Our ownership portfolio has expanded. We've acquired 262 new units. That represents Wood Spring and Hartwood Common. And we have rehabilitated and preserved regulated affordability for 592 units. We also have sought and received approval for the Section 18 disposition of 60 public housing units. The proceeds from those sales will add to the affordable housing supply in the community and allow for development and preservation. Another big accomplishment, and one that I work on closely, is the Moving to Work program. The Housing Authority received Moving to Work status in 2021. Since then, we have 32 approved waivers, adding to our ability to simplify rent processes, change recertification schedules to reduce the burden on participants, and to add flexibility to our local project-based voucher programs. One exciting accomplishment is our engagement in the Tiered Rent Study, which is a national study investigating how changed recertification schedules and rent calculation processes can support family self-sufficiency outcomes. Our waiver requests this year focus on self-sufficiency and stabilizing families. They include goal-based incentives for family self-sufficiency and expanding our Zero HAP Safety Net period. Our Family Self-Sufficiency Program features case management to support households developing their self-sufficiency skills and strengths. Households that increase earnings receive payments to an escrow account. This enables them to build assets. These funds are awarded at FSS program graduation. Under the traditional Family Self-Sufficiency Program, households only receive escrow deposits if they increase their earned income. They do not receive escrow deposits for non-income increase accomplishments, such as educational attainment, family stability goals, credit recovery, anything other than increased earned income. We would like to add goal-based incentives during the program to award escrow for completing goals other than income increases. Households that increase their income will continue to earn escrow under our proposed changes. Zero HAP Safety Net period will extend a safety net for households who have attained self-sufficiency under the program. Under our current rules, households that increase income over time and have their tenant rent portion increase, to the point it covers their entire rent, enter Zero HAP status. That means they're no longer receiving housing assistance payment. This is a positive step for those households, but it can be very, very scary for households to lose that rental assistance payment. And right now, our safety net period for those households is only six months. During those six months, they can report income decreases or changes in household composition and start receiving assistance payments again. After those six months, they're no longer eligible. They're exited from the program. And if they need assistance again, they have to start over with the waiting list. We'd like to extend the safety net period from six to 12 months to give households a bigger safety net as they increase their income and to reduce pressure to reduce income at month five of the safety net period. The goals of both of these waivers are to support households progressing towards program graduation and self-sufficiency by removing that pressure to reduce income at month five and adding incentives for education, credit recovery, and other stability goals. That's the end of our presentation about the PHA Plan. So we can turn it over for our public review, public comment, and your action. After, if you approve our submission, we will move on to submit it to HUD before our deadline on April 17th.
Thank you very much for the presentation. First, I would like to compliment and thank both Director Roper and Director Savaro for their service in joining us on the Housing Authority Board of Directors. Both this topic and the prior one is really a demonstration of two major, major programs that you have contributed to in your service on the Housing Authority Board of Directors. And I hope you're feeling really great about the time and energy that you invest in your service here. So thank you for joining us on this long journey. Directors, do you have any questions before I move on? Go ahead, Directors.
Not a question, it's a little bit just appreciation for the Family Self-Sufficiency Waiver Program. I, just the personal experience, I was a recipient of the Individual Development Account Program, which is a state program that supports people who are lower income and have asset savings goals. And then there's a match component to it. So definitely that program alone allowed me to support going to college and being able to get education and, and you know, really build a whole life. And so I think, I think of programs like this that allow for those specific goals that one might have. And it might not always be a direct route to more income, but it might be some of those other goals, like starting a small business or setting up the ability to start saving for college. So those are things that I really appreciate that you guys are thinking about, how families could really use asset savings programs like that. And definitely encourage you to look at the Individual Development Account as a potential framework for how you can think about goal-setting and sort of the process that they use there. I think it's a great program that's used across the state and really huge benefit. And just really appreciate, like Chair Harrington was saying, like it's been awesome to be part of this board and see the progression of being able to apply for Moving to Work status and being able to get into this process. It's a distinction amongst housing authorities that I don't know that we always recognize, but it's a, it's a real wealth of experience and knowledge, and it represents the amazing work you guys are doing.
With that.
I would also like to say something as well.
Oh, go ahead, Director Roper.
I'm a participant in the FSS program. It's been an interesting ride with it because I've seen growth on Washington Housing side. It was uncertain, like who, if I had, if I was even on the program, if I was on the waitlist. And during the pandemic, there were so many uncertainties. And you guys cleaned it up a lot and narrowed down who the point of contacts are and being more proactive. I appreciate it. One thing that I found like difficult was not knowing if I was on that program or not in the beginning to accrue an escrow. And then when I did find out, I was like, okay, my time has been cut in half. Now I have to do double the work. And with all the trials and tribulations that these past four years have dealt us and thrown our ways, curveballs, it gets really difficult to navigate when your rent goes up and then, and trying to calculate inflation and cost of living and all this other stuff. So, but I do appreciate that this is available for people out there if they're in the Housing Authority programs and stuff like. Just got to make sure to ask your case manager to apply. That's one thing. It's just not given to you. You just have to ask and dig around for it. But it's great to have this available to us.
Thank you, Director Roper. Appreciate the feedback. So at this juncture, I'd like to open a public hearing and ask Clerk Moss if we have anyone who wishes to speak on this matter.
Yes, thank you, Director Harrington. Mr. Dale Feek. Would anyone else like to provide comment as well as raise your hand? Let me know. Not seeing any others in the room, so it'll just be Mr. Feek.
Go ahead, Mr. Feek. We have a third chair and a third mic.
This mic works?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair Harrington, Commissioners and Directors Savaro and Roper. I had to scoot over to read her name. So I'm Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966, resident of Washington County since 1966. I got on the web and printed some of the stuff that the Director, Executive Director Rogers and Jen and Nichols and Baron and others wrote, and I'm impressed. I'm also impressed with Jim Brenn. Jim Brenn is the owner of Jim's Automotive in Forest Grove. And he's been my mechanic for years, and I like him, and he is retiring. One of the reasons, and you're smiling, Housing Director Savaro, the reason he's retiring is because the county bought the owner of the property. And Jim leases the property from him. And he was sold it to the county. The market price was, I think, $2 million. And the county bought it for either 1.4, 1.5 million. And it's a good investment. It's next to, located next to Safeway. It's on the transportation corridor where people can have easy access to transportation. And it shouldn't be too much of a conflict within the residents of Forest Grove. Because many of us in Forest Grove support, highly support, adequate housing and services for people that need it. My mom had properties in La Grande. She was kind of a HUD person herself. And she under, she didn't charge enough money for what the people should have got from the property because she did HUD stuff, and she had to submit to HUD regulations. I have 14 seconds. My point is, congratulations, you Commissioners and Directors, and also congratulations for the staff that done superior job in making the residents of Washington County better for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Is there any member of the public that wishes to provide comment online via Zoom? I'll give you just a moment to use the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I will close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to authorize the Executive Director and the Chair to execute the required PHA certifications, direct and authorize the Executive Director to submit these three different plans, the FY 2025 Five-Year Plan, the Annual PHA Plan, and the Moving to Work Supplement to HUD.
We do approve the motion.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Director Savaro, a second from Director Roper. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously 6 to 0. Thank you. Job well done.
Thank you, Chair and Directors.
A lot of work went into that. Next, we'll move on to the second public comment period for the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
Yes, Madam Director, we had Mr. Dale Feek. Did you still want to provide comments?
No.
Okay.
No, just, yeah, thank you.
Is there any other member in the auditorium that wishes to provide comment for up to five minutes? Not seeing one raise a hand coming forward. Any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment to the Housing Authority? Please utilize the raise hand function. Give you just a moment. Not seeing any hands. Director Harrington.
Thank you very much, Clerk Moss. I have no Board of Director announcements for today, but do any of you have any Board of Director announcements? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn today's Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting.
We do adjourn the meeting.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously 6 to 0. So the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, Directors, Roper, and Savaro for joining us today. We'll take a pause for five minutes so that our team can do the conversion over to our regular business meetings. So we will, we will convene that at 10:21. Also, knowing that we have four different proclamations, I would like to change that order so that we take E3 first, I think. But I'll announce that earlier when we convene the meeting. Okay? See you at 10:21.
All righty, Board of Commissioners, welcome back. And over to you, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and welcome, everyone, to the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting for this Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, and welcome to the month of April. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, meeting this regular session, April 1st, 2025. Commissioner Fai?
President.
Commissioner Schneider?
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Chair Harrington. And I'll announce Commissioner Teresa's excuse on county business.
Yep, thank you very much. Would everyone in the audience please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Before we move on to public communication, I have a few announcements to make. First and foremost, welcome, everyone, and thank you in advance for sharing your comments with us during our public comment sessions. You can also provide your thoughts through emails to the Board, phone calls, and constituent meetings. If you are here to comment on the upcoming proposed budget, please know that that proposed budget does not exist yet. It will be released by our Budget Officer, Ms. Tanya Angie, on Monday, April 28th, and we'll all have an opportunity that evening to learn more about it, and then through the budget process, to ask questions and comment on that. So please refer to the Washington County website for the various meetings that we'll have on that. If you have thoughts or concerns about Clean Water Services, you can also email us as the Board of Directors for CWS at CWSboard, B-O-A-R-D, at cleanwaterservices.org. If you're here on elections, yes, I know, we've gotten quite a range of opinions, but please know that the Washington County Charter does not allow us, as the Board of Commissioners, to pull the county back from the state election system. Our county elections team follows all state and federal election laws. The Board has definitely heard your comments in the past, and thank you for those. With regard to one of the recent executive orders from President Trump regarding the conduct of federal elections, please know that upon guidance from the Oregon Secretary of State, our upcoming May 20th, 2025 election, there will be no impact, as that is not a federal election. And if you have any election comments, concerns, or questions, do feel free to reach out to the Secretary of State Election Division. Thank you. And with that, Clerk Moss, could you please check to see if we have any members of our community who wish to share their comments on any topic for up to two minutes, an individual 10 minutes total?
Yes, Chair Harrington. The first two we have is Dale Feek, followed by Sandra Nelson.
Please go ahead.
Madam Chair Harrington and Commissioners Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966. I was going to do something different today because I don't really like the way the people, especially Bill Maury, broke protocol and asked everybody to stand and say a pledge allegiance to the flag. I just thought that was wrong. There's another way to go about changing the procedure besides just breaking protocol and not only following the protocol here, but also following not their own protocol that they have in writing and not being respectful for the way things are supposed to occur in a county commission meeting. So I was going to request, everybody here, please stand up and recite something with me, and I was going to have something for you to recite. But now, since in a work session today, the county commissioners, through ultimate, all of you voted to go ahead and just say the pledge allegiance to the beginning of the meeting, so that kind of resolved that issue, but I just don't like the way it was done. That's my point. And so it's done. And so what I was going to request is everybody stand up, take a look at the Oregon flag, and do this pledge, and I was going to have for you, you can stand up, everybody stand up with me, and read this pledge with me. And this is what I was going to say. Oregon is considered a sanctuary state because its laws restrict state and local government, including law enforcement, from actively assisting federal immigration enforcement without a judicial order. Sanctuary laws. Oregon's sanctuary laws prohibit state and local government, including law enforcement, from helping enforce federal immigration laws without a signed court order. Restriction on cooperation, protection of immigrants, no duty, reporting violations, sanctuary promise. That's important. Saying the pledge allegiance is important, but also holding state sanctuary laws is also important. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for everybody supporting me.
Ms. Nelson, please go ahead.
Thank you. I love Dale, but we're different. I'm Sandra Nelson, a resident of Washington County. Happy April Fool's Day, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. This day does give us an opportunity to consider what a fool really is and how we should relate to fools. So what's a fool and its opposite? Each one of us can come up with our own subjective definitions, but it would probably be wiser to base our definition on a more objective source, on the biblical heritage of our country and state. Here's some wisdom from a Psalm and the Book of Proverbs, also called the Book of Wisdom. "The fool says in his heart, 'There is no God.' The fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge. Fools despise wisdom and instruction. The way of a fool is right in his own eyes, but a wise man listens to advice." Jesus called certain people fools. He tells a story about a rich man who accumulates great wealth for himself and who believes he can now relax, eat, drink, and be merry. But God said to him, "Fool, this night your soul is required of you, and the things you have prepared, whose will they be?" Interestingly, the Bible talks about fools, and Jesus himself called certain people fools, but it's amazing what he tells his followers. "But I say to you that everyone who is angry with his brother will be liable to judgment; whoever insults his brother will be liable to the counsel; and whoever says, 'You fool,' will be liable to the hell of fire." It appears that God may judge fools, but we may not. We are called to love all people, even foolish ones, and truth be told, we all act like fools occasionally. Thank God for forgiveness. Father in Heaven, thank you for the wisdom found in your holy word. Help us to be wise, not foolish. Thank you for our county commissioners. Please give them extra wisdom, because the decisions they make affect so many people. In Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Moss, who's next?
Was there any other members of the auditorium that didn't get set up that wanted to comment? Not seeing the room. We do have one hand online, Mr. Jim Long. Mr. Long, can you hear us?
So I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Can you see me?
No, we don't do that.
I'm glad. Good morning. Yes, it's April Fool's Day, April 1st. Happy April for you. I'm here to speak about improving procedures for citizen involvement regarding middle housing applications. For the last couple of months, the CPO 4M has voted unanimously supporting this letter describing an affront to public involvement land use matters in Oregon, particularly in Washington County. We are concerned about changes and reductions in notification that circumvent statewide land use planning laws, which violate the laws that have been in effect for 50 years. Goal one states that jurisdictions should create a program for citizen involvement that clearly defines the procedures by which the general public can be involved in the ongoing planning process in all phases of it. Our members are generally not opposed to middle housing, but object to the procedures for it. Oregonians expect to be informed and asked to provide advice on development applications in their neighborhood. CPO 4M leaders have been receiving complaints from their members about the lack of public process in approving middle housing applications. We have three requests. We request changes for better notice for nearby residents. There is none now in Washington County. We request neighborhood meetings be held so developers can present their plans and receive feedback from neighbors. And we request that middle housing be elevated to a Type II process in Washington County. We look forward to a positive response to citizen involvement in all phases of land use planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Right. And not seeing any additional hands. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of 12 items: one set of minutes, two items from Clean Water Services, four items from Health and Human Services, one item from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, four items from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding today's consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we'll move on to Boards and Commissions. We have a proposal to appoint Chris, Ayesha, Paul Cummings, Len Kimley-Crew, Kishnel Lucas, and Deborah Walton as members of the Housing Advisory Committee, each with terms ending March 31st, 2029. What are the wishes of the Commission? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero, and I would thank all of those community members for volunteering their time and expertise serving on the Housing Advisory Commission Committee. Next, we will move on to proclamations, and I'm going to ask that we take Item 3 first. So I would like to invite our staff and members, guests who have been invited, to proclaim April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month up to the table. Thank you, Alicia Sojourner, our Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. And if we need more chairs, we have those. Sometimes it just takes us a little bit to set everything up. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Alicia Sojourner, the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. I am honored to introduce this proclamation as well as a few remarks. Washington County Cultural Heritage Celebrations and Resource Page are important starting points for our collective organization, engagement, and learning about the community we serve every day. The diversity of lived experiences, equity, and inclusion is very important to our community members as well as our staff. They offer opportunities to enter and strengthen relationships with staff and community members who recognize the important role that Arab American community members have played in the diversity of Washington County. The Arab American community, like many other cultures, is not monolithic. It encompasses a wide array, wide range of diverse lived experiences, contributions, and of course, opinions. Even with the wide range of Arab American experiences, the one we know to be true is that Arab American history is also American history, and it's essential for us understanding that so we truly understand our nation's full entire story. At the County Arab American Heritage Month celebrations have been planned and organized by a number of staff who volunteer in supporting our learning and understanding in addition to their official work. This also is done within partnership with Clean Water Services. We encourage everyone who is curious to learn more about Arab Heritage Month to reach out to OEICE, also known as the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, and we are happy to have a dialogue with our colleagues and other community members. I want to take a moment just to thank all the members of the committee who met over the past few weeks in making this possible. With that, I would like to turn it over to two amazing community members who will briefly introduce themselves and read the proclamation.
Good morning. My name is Yasmeen Alkeshev, and I'm a resident of Washington County for the last 10 years, I would say. I'm a certified translator between Arabic and English. I'm also a certified court interpreter. I am an adjunct professor at New York University, where I teach interpreting as well. I'm a mother of two kids who enjoy being here. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Leila Heychou, and actually, I was asked just two minutes ago to join you, so I'm very honored to be here. I've been a Washingtonian County resident for probably about 35 years, but I also serve for the City of Portland Police Department and Coalition Advisory Groups that includes Muslim, African-American, Slavic, Asian Pacific Islanders, and such. And I also was the co-founder of Islamic Social Services of Oregon State, which means we help anybody who needs help to be self-reliant. So I do a lot of community work for the past 30 years, and I'm very happy, as a daughter of an Iraqi immigrant who came here in the 40s, to be able to share contributions to the United States as an Arab American. So thank you.
Shall we start? Yeah. Okay. A proclamation in honor of Arab American Heritage Month 2025. Whereas, for over a century, Arab Americans have made valuable contributions to every aspect of American society: in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, civil and military service, entertainment, and culture. And whereas, for generations, Arab immigrants have shared their rich history and traditions with our community, while being emblematic of entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas, nearly 32,000 Oregonians are of Arab descent, and more than 6,700 of them call Washington County home, and their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed enrich our great democracy. And whereas, Victor George Atiyah served as the 32nd Governor of the State of Oregon from 1979 to 1987, giving Oregon the distinction of being the first with an elected Arab American governor, and...
And despite their achievements, the history of Arabs in America remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech, and Arab American... And Arab Americans have faced civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying that must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. And the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us build a better nation, and they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month and invites the people of Washington County to join in celebrating our rich and diverse culture, honoring the past and inspiring the future, to educate others as we move to create a more inclusive, just, and prosperous world for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, comments or motion?
Move to approve the proclamation.
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And I would invite our speakers here as well as members of our staff and community who would like to take a picture to memorialize this opportunity, to please join us. Usually, we just try to arrange at most two proclamations. Thankfully, we are light on action items today, so we have four different proclamations. And our next one is to proclaim April 7th through 11th of 2025, Public Health Week here in Washington County. And I would like to recognize our Director of Health and Human Services, Mira Semantel, who will help introduce our other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. As the Chair said, my name is Mira Semantel. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. I'm honored to introduce our speakers today for our proclamation honoring next week as National Public Health Week. So with me, I have Laura Daly. She is our Policy and Planning Senior Program Coordinator with Public Health. And we also have our community partner Nancy Cornejo Angel with Familias and Accion, and she will be supporting the presentation as well today. So I'll be using the clicker, but I'll turn it over to Laura to kick us off.
Thank you, Mira, and thank you, Chair Harrington, and to the Board for letting us present today. My name is Laura Daly, I'm she/her, and I am the Policy and Planning Senior Program Coordinator with the Public Health Division. I will provide a very brief overview of National Public Health Week, and then I will hand it off to Nancy to share about their public health work in the community. Each year, the Public Health -- the American Public Health Association celebrates National Public Health Week during the first full week of April, and this is their 30th year doing so. It's an opportunity to celebrate the work and impact of public health. Each year, there is a theme to highlight specific aspects of this work, and this year the theme is "It Starts Here," a nod to the fact that public health starts at every level of life, from the well-being of individuals to the resilience of communities and neighborhoods, and to the priorities and protections offered by counties and states. Public health also starts across different areas of practice, including in policy and advocacy work, in advancing health equity, through building and strengthening the public health workforce for a secure future, and through addressing the health impacts of climate change. Go to the next slide. To celebrate, we are holding several events, starting today with our Board of County Commissioners' proclamation for National Public Health Week. On April 7th, our WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children, is hosting a lactation resource table here at the Public Services Building. On April 8th, our Climate and Health Team and our Emergency Preparedness Team are hosting an extreme heat tabletop exercise with community partners. And then on April 9th and 10th, we will be holding virtual lunch and learn sessions for county staff to learn about the work of the Public Health Division. April 9th will have present -- two presentations, one about the presence of bird flu in Oregon, and another about childhood exposures to lead in our county. And on April 10th, we will have three presentations. The first, about how the loneliness epidemic and substance use are related. The second, about public health emergency preparedness. And our final one is about incorporating community data into our public health response to climate-related events. And then finally, last slide, on April 11th, we will host a National Public Health Week Staff and Community Partner Celebration Event here at the PSB. This event will include public health recognition awards, opportunities for public health partners to tell stories about their work, and a tabling and networking session. And now, I will pass it to Nancy to talk about some of the work that they are doing at Familias.
Thank you. Good morning, esteemed Chair and Commissioners, public health colleagues, and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here as we celebrate National Public Health Week. My name is Nancy Cornejo Angel. I am the Community Engagement Organizer at Familias and Accion, where our mission is to advance Latina health and wellness through education, supportive services, and programs that uplift the community wisdom and strength. We envision a future where our culture is valued in the pursuit of health justice. Our core initiatives include our Community Health Workforce Development Program that trains and supports community health workers by offering a 90-hour Spanish certification training, continuing education, and career coaching; our Health Navigation Program that helps individuals access and understand healthcare, social services, and other community resources; our Nutrition Health Program, which provides educational workshops on healthy eating at a multi-generational -- generational level; gardening and cooking while also connecting families with food resources; our Sexual Health Program, which works to reduce the stigma and health disparities by providing culturally relevant education, outreach, and navigation for HIV and STI prevention, testing, and overall sexual wellness. Lastly, I'm here today to highlight our Climate and Health Program, formerly known as Accion Climática. This program aims to deepen community knowledge about climate change so that participants can care for their health, their families, and their communities in the face of a rapid changing climate. At Familias and Accion, we believe that addressing climate change is public health work. Latina communities, particularly low-income and immigrant families, face higher vulnerability to climate-related health risks. Many work in industries that expose them to extreme heat, poor air quality, and environmental hazards. Others face economic and housing insecurity, making it harder to recover from climate disasters. This is not just about the weather, it's about health, stability, and survival. Through our Clima Salud y Resilencia class, we offer education to community health workers to better understand and address these impacts, from respiratory illnesses caused by wildfires to mental health challenges like stress and anxiety linked to climate uncertainty. Our emergency preparedness workshops equip families with strategies to stay safe before, during, and after extreme weather events. Most importantly, we emphasize community resilience as a path to collective healing because stronger, more connected communities are healthier communities. We honor their strength, wisdom, and agency in shaping solutions. We intentionally create spaces for storytelling, cultural traditions, and mutual aid, recognizing that healing happens through connection, joy, and shared experiences. We equip community members with tools and practices that not only protect against climate risks, but also nurture hope, well-being, and a sense of belonging, all essential to thriving in the face of change. National Public Health Week reminds us that health is not just about hospitals and clinics, it's about the environments we live in, the policies that protect us, and the resilience we built together. Familias and Accion remains committed to truthfully addressing realities of climate change and its impact on Latina communities. We deeply appreciate the county's ongoing efforts to advance public health inequity, and we look forward to the continued support in ensuring that culturally relevant education and resources reach those who need them most. Now, more than ever, this work must remain a priority, and we're eager to continue partnering with you to build long-term, sustainable solutions that uplift and protect our communities. Thank you for your time, for your commitment to public health, and for recognizing the importance of culturally specific approaches in bettering and building a healthier, more resilient future for us all. Whereas, the week of April 7th through 11th, 2025, is National Public Health Week, and the theme this year is "It Starts Here," which recognizes that public health starts with each of us making a difference in our own -- in our homes and communities. And whereas, healthy people and healthy communities provide a foundation for a strong, diverse, and vibrant society. And whereas, social determinants of health, including colonialism, impact health, well-being, and quality of life, and differ drastically by zip code. And whereas, Black, Indigenous, Latina, people of color, immigrants, refugees, and other marginalized communities have ancestral wisdom, lived experience, skills, and talents that empower and meaningfully engage communities in efforts to address the root causes of systemic health disparities and health inequities. And whereas, Washington County Public Health partners with communities to advance health equity through prevention, such as home visiting for new parents, education, such as nutrition and lactation education, policy and system enhancements, such as through the Emergency Medical Services, or EMS, program, and regulation, such as restaurants -- restaurant inspections. And whereas, Washington County Public Health is committed to leading with race and engaging authentically with communities to provide culturally responsive and linguistically appropriate programs and services that are effective, equitable, and responsive to diverse cultural health benefit -- beliefs, practices, and health literacy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this first day of April 2025, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, acting as a local public health authority, does hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through 11th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Washington County.
Thank you. Beautifully done. Commissioners?
I move that we approve April 7th to 11th, 2025, as Public Health Week in Washington County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. If we could, put that last slide back up, and if you -- you and other community members and staff members involved in this work could join us here for a photo, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's try to get everyone as close together as possible. You all look great. Thank you all so much.
My apologies, I will start over. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to proclaiming April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in Washington County. We have Shannon Wilson, our Program Manager for the Office of Community Development; Molly Rogers, our Director for the Department of Housing; and John Miller, the Executive Director for the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. Thank you for joining us. Please take it away.
Great, well, good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thanks so much for the opportunity to be with you, and for the opportunity to acknowledge the critical value of fair housing. As you said, my name is Shannon Wilson, and I'm the Program Manager for the Office of Community Development, and use she/her pronouns. I am joined by my colleagues, John Miller and Molly Rogers. And so we'll each provide brief comments and then read the proclamation. So the Federal Fair Housing Act was passed in 1968, which is poignant with regard to timing, as it was passed just six days after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. The Act put into law equal access to housing regardless of one's race, color, national origin, religion, sex, including sexual orientation and gender identity, familial status, and disability. The state of Oregon has the additional protected classes of marital status and source of income. We commemorate the passage of this legislation with recognizing each April as Fair Housing Month. This year, the proclamation is especially significant as federal provisions to the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements have been rolled back to previous standards from 30 years ago. This has resulted in fewer safeguards that ensure local jurisdictions around the country are complying with the Fair Housing Act. In Washington County, though, we continue to work closely with the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. We jointly outreach to community partners and also contract with the Fair Housing Council to do fair housing testing at rental housing properties. We also work closely -- a lot of the work our office does is as a consortium, and so we work a lot with the different jurisdictions throughout the county. And so we do have staff from the City of Hillsborough that work with us and the Fair Housing Council in these efforts. So staff from Hillsborough are here with us in the audience today. And then I also want to share that, finally, we jointly collaborate regularly with the Department of Housing Services, and we are very proud and honored to jointly present this proclamation this morning. And so with that, I will hand it over to Molly Rogers. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I am excited to share and recognize the importance of fair housing. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers, and I'm the Director of Housing Services. First, let me just share my gratitude to the Fair Housing Council of Oregon and their tremendous work in fighting discrimination and promoting equal access to housing. It is thanks to them that we were able to empower our staff, providing them with the Fair Housing Bus Tour of Portland last year, which I highly recommend to everyone, shedding light on the history of unfair housing. This work is part of a larger effort to promote fair housing in our community. You may have heard that HUD has been actually defunding fair housing programs around the country. They terminated 78 fair housing grants in organizations in 33 states around the country. And so unfortunately, right now, fair housing is under attack. But regardless, fair housing laws are in place, and I'm really grateful that Washington County continues to embrace the law and have given us resources to help continue this vital work in the community. We, as Molly mentioned, we've got our display out in the lobby, and that's actually a great display that really goes through racism, discrimination, and fair housing violations through the history of Oregon. It's a great read, and so I recommend that if folks have a chance to take some time and read through those panels, it's very educational and eye-opening, and really emphasizes the importance of the work that we're engaged in here. So thank you so much for your continued support of our work. It's really critical right now, as some of our federal partners are pulling back. And, but again, the law is in place, and we are charging forward regardless of any kind of funding issues that are coming from Washington DC right now. So, and with that, we, each year, we do have a poster contest where we invite children from throughout the state to put in entries. This year, the theme was "Together, We Build a Neighborhood." And we've got a couple posters here that, yeah, here, if you want to...
When we take a group photo...
Yeah, we'll hold those up.
Hold those up.
I also provided you, each Commissioner, a copy of the posters, so if you'd like to put those in your offices, that would be greatly appreciated. And with that, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. So this is our proclamation to the Board of Commissioners for Washington County, Fair Housing Month, April 2025. Whereas the year 2025 marks the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act, Title VIII, of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, and whereas this law guarantees that housing throughout the United States should be made available to all community members without regard to race, color, religion, gender, familial status, disability, or national origin, and whereas Oregon Fair Housing Law guarantees that housing throughout the state of Oregon should be made available to all community members without regard to marital status, source of income, sexual orientation, including gender identity, and survivors of domestic violence, and whereas equality of opportunity for all is a fundamental policy of this nation, state, and county, and whereas barriers which diminish the rights and limit the options of any community member will ultimately diminish the rights of all community members, and whereas only with the cooperation, commitment, and support from all of the residents of Washington County can barriers to the enjoyment of this and other aspects of equality of opportunity for all be removed, now therefore be it resolved that Washington County's Board of Commissioner hereby proclaims April 2025 to be Fair Housing Month, and encourages all community members to support and endorse fair housing, reaffirm their commitment to fair housing for all, and wholeheartedly recognize these rights and responsibilities throughout the year. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Washington County, Oregon, to be affixed on this first day of April 2025. Signed, Commissioner Catherine Harrington.
Yes, thank you. And what are the wishes of the Commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to proclaim April 2025 Fair Housing Month in Washington County. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero, and I would like to invite not only the three of you, but all of our staff members and community members involved in this work of fair housing, as well as addressing affordable housing and homeless services to please join us in this future opportunity. Thank you. Okay, and now we have one more. We do this work of county government each and every week of the year, and today, we're going to take the opportunity to proclaim April as National County Government Month here in 2025. I would like to thank my staff assistant, Grace Sarpack, as well as the other staff members here of Washington County for helping us to bring this forward. Do each Commissioner have the proclamation in front of you? Okay, so I suggest I'll start with the top, and then we'll...
I do not have it in front of me.
We'll share. You and I will share. And then Commissioner Snyder, you'll start with the first "whereas," and we'll just go down the line, okay? So, proclamation, Board of Commissioners for Washington County, Oregon, a proclamation in honor of National County Government Month 2025.
Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 330 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and?
Whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives, and?
Whereas counties intergovernmental partners enact local, state, and federal programs to address the needs of all residents, and?
Whereas Washington County, Oregon, as one of 36 Oregon counties and all counties nationwide, take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and?
Whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services, and?
Whereas Washington County thrives as a diverse and innovative community, where natural beauty and economic opportunity flourish. We are committed to sustainability and celebrate the collaborative spirit that ensures a bright future for all of our residents.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month, and calls upon the people of Washington County to observe this month.
What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to this proclamation? Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero, and I would like to invite not only the Board of Directors, but all of our staff who help us do this work each and every day, to join us in a photograph. Thank you. your life here in Washington County. Next, we're going to move on to presentations. Today, we have a presentation regarding the Supportive Housing Services Program, the amended Year Four Work Plan, and a proposed annual work plan for Year Five, which is fiscal year '26. Welcome to our staff.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, for the introduction. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jess Larson. I'm your Assistant Director in the Department of Housing Services overseeing the, or sorry, Assistant Director in the Department of Housing Services overseeing our Homeless Services Division. I'm pleased to introduce our colleagues working on this, and especially introduce Katie Gentry, who's joined our team this month. She joins us, returning to Washington County, where she grew up in the town of Tigard, and having gone off and worked in homeless services across the country in Denver and Maricopa County, Arizona especially, and bringing that expertise back to us here in Washington County. So we're thrilled to have her aboard, and you'll be getting to know her over the year, starting today with our presentation on this coming year's work plan, and also addressing our current year, Year Four's work plan. As you know, since the creation of the Homeless Services Program under the Supportive Housing Services Resources, we've been drafting an annual work plan to guide the work forward and set ambitious, yet achievable, goals that we measure our progress to date on a quarterly basis here before you in our presentations, and also in our reports to our funders at Metro. So today's conversation is about those work plans, both the current year's work plan, which we must amend, and next year's work plan, which we are drafting. And these work plans are based on our budget capacities, which have changed, as you know. This is a year of transition ahead of us still for the Supportive Housing Work Plan, pardon me, for the Supportive Housing Services Program, because we are adjusting to a new revenue forecast that has projected a 15% reduction in revenues currently and going forward. Of course, that is just a forecast, not actual, so we are always learning to live flexibly, strategically, and nimbly with those resources. Additionally, after four years of building the homeless services system of care here in Washington County, we are now reaching that capacity, and this is why with those reductions in revenues, we need to scale back slightly. So we are looking at some reductions in our contracted capacity with our providers for next year. But going forward as a system, we won't be solving the need with additional capacity. We will be solving the need for our community through continuous improvement and efficiencies and evaluation of our outcomes. So you're going to see our goals change for next year, reflective of this transition that our system is in. And then third, we are indeed still building out those final building blocks of the system of care. We have seven, I believe, capital projects underway in Year Five. So we've just opened two shelters this year. We anticipate opening a third next year, and an access center. We have two transitional housing sites that will be under construction. We also are seeking a future permanent home for our POD programs, and we have a future permanent supportive housing project under development. So all of this capital projects investment will continue to grow and stabilize our system of care, even as we are shifting some of our programmatic work. And I want to illustrate this all for you, because as we are transitioning, we're also planning ahead for years to come, and we will be continuing to transition our system better, working to better meet our community's needs year after year, not just this year. So hopefully, that's a kind of a helpful introduction to today's conversation, and we look forward to your continued guidance. There'll be some questions at the end of the presentation, so that you can continue to direct and guide this game-changing community program that we're so proud to deliver in partnership with your board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you, Assistant Director Larson, and hello, Chair Harrington, members of the Commission. For the record, Nicole Sting, I use she/her pronouns, and serve as Strategic Initiative and Relations Manager in your Homeless Services Division. It's good to be here, it's good to be bringing back the updated Program Year Four Work Plan that's governing this current fiscal year. I'm hoping that this is a "as you recall" moment. As you may recall, we came to you in February, we forecasted some of these updates, and you'll see on this next slide that what we forecasted is mostly what we'll see. So actually, I'm skipping a slide here, I have a bit more information. Jess will help to walk through. We're undergoing a 15% reduction this fiscal year. Because of that reduction, we know what we set forth to do a year ago is not achievable in this current year, and we're feeling okay about the way we're reducing our system. We're doing that, of course, in partnership with our Solutions Council and the Executive Director Roundtable that we host for homeless services. And the reductions this year are certainly challenging. They don't feel great, but they're not horrible for our system. We're in a hard but surmountable moment. And as you'll see on this slide, the proposed reductions are fairly in line with what we shared with you in February. The key difference that is on this slide is we're excited to share, we don't need to make reductions in our Permanent Supportive Housing Placement Goals. We're eager to continue with that progress and hold true on what is the core mission of housing folks and keeping people sustainably housed. But where we did make reductions that we did not forecast in February was around shelter. I want to uplift that these reductions, because we've often said we have a shelter system of over 400 units. With the reduction of this goal, that doesn't change. What we're reducing is the number of units supported, shelter units supported by SHS. So our system still boasts over 400 shelter units when we consider state investments through the State Homelessness Assistance Program that is delivered through the community action of... of Oregon Agency. So, we're grateful to still have that robust system. We're clarifying what SHS is funded. And in addition, we've talked to this board quite a bit about eviction prevention reductions. Despite our fairly significant reduction in that program, the outcomes are not necessarily being reduced proportionally. So, we're still able to achieve some really important outcomes in anticipating to prevent over, prevent a thousand evictions this fiscal year. Where we see larger reductions are in the Move-In Ready Program. That's a newer program still and will be retooled this next fiscal year. And then additionally in rapid rehousing, we're making some pretty dramatic reductions there to ensure that we're not housing folks that will then need to unhouse as we slowly scale that program down over multiple fiscal years. So, we'll talk more about this slide at the end of the presentation. But again, hopefully, this is familiar, in line with what you were expecting to see. And the big exciting news is what Katie will present in our program Year Five Work Plan. So, I will turn the slide and pass it over to her.
Nicole, and as Jess mentioned, my name is Katie Gentry. I'm really excited to be back in the Northwest and enjoying the rain and not a hundred-degree Phoenix weather. But as we launch into twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and Year Five of SHS, we're really, as Jess mentioned, ambitious yet achievable goals, really thinking through what we can achieve and really looking at what does a robust system look like across our system. So, with that, I'll dive in. One of the things that, as Jess mentioned, we're moving away from kind of a ramping-up system. And so, we're really looking at, although we will still be talking about placements, we'll be talking about beyond just placements of folks moving into housing. And so, our goal for twenty-five, twenty-six is looking at three hundred and seventy-five placements through our housing programs, as well as some of, some other robust goals as I get to the following slides. We also, as Nicole mentioned, are looking at this new program really focused away from eviction prevention and into homeless prevention, move-in-ready funding that are folks who are ready and are able to sustain their housing afterwards, that we can have a robust fund that will be able to quickly move them into that sustainable solution. Although we are not setting a goal for that, we will be launching that program in twenty-five, twenty-six and have a more robust goal as time moves on. I also want to talk about some program capacity goals. So, this is kind of as that shift looks like. As Nicole mentioned, over four hundred households in shelter, three hundred and eighty-five of those are SHS-funded, but have over four hundred throughout our system of care. And then, we also have supporting over twenty-five hundred households in housing with case management and rent assistance, both through SHS funding but also our state funding and our federal funding through the Continuum of Care Program, making sure that we have that robust system that is leveraging kind of all the different funding sources that we're bringing through the department. We also want to move folks through our system. So, as we are no longer rapidly increasing our system, we are looking at, we still need a throughput through the system. So, how are we moving folks through shelter so that shelter is not the place that people get stuck? So, exiting over four hundred households into a positive exit. So, whether that is permanent housing on their own or into our housing programs, we want to make sure that they are successful in that next step beyond shelter. For folks that we're placing into our housing programs, that they are retaining that housing and are successful beyond the programming that we are doing with them. So, eighty-five percent of households will retain that housing successfully. And then, really thinking about what is next. We talk about long-term and medium-term solutions, but we are not the solution for forever. And so, successfully graduating our households, two hundred households is our goal for next year, into that beyond case management and how they sustain their housing moving forward now that we've provided and successfully gotten them the tools to be in that housing. We also have goals for system effectiveness and kind of overarching program effectiveness. So, designing, as Jess mentioned, transitional housing to go live in the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. So, both development of that programmatically and also the buildings that those will reside in. Designing that pool of funding source, so we have a place where folks can quickly move into housing and access the financial resources to move into that housing. And then, moving, as we think through Year Six through Ten, what our local implementation plan looks like and ensuring that we have effective and robust engagement from stakeholders, community feedback, and providers in our community. We also know we ask a lot of our providers, and so, we want to make sure that we are helping them to the most effective way possible. So, how do we leverage Medicaid, especially our eleven-fifteen waiver, into the coming year, providing them with the technical assistance? We hope to have at least four of our providers billing Medicaid, as well as reducing that overhead and burden for our invoicing process. We have heard dramatically that we have a lot of processes in place. And so, how can we ensure that they are effective processes and that folks are getting paid in the most timely manner possible? I would be remiss if we're not talking about racial equity in this conversation. And so, as we go into twenty-five, twenty-six, we're looking at Asian-American households and how we are effectively serving that population that are underrepresented in our community right now in our homeless services, as well as rolling out the regional racial equity tool. Our staff were trained over the past month on that tool, and we will be rolling that out across our decision-making processes and ensuring that every process and decision that we make, we are looking at it through this lens tool to ensure that we are seeing the repercussions of specifically racial equity, but also all of our decision-making and who those decisions will impact. So, with that, I am going to turn it back over to Nicole to talk about what's next.
Thank you. And just to, before we open it up for discussion, just to give you the roadmap of where we're going, we're here with you today. We're remiss not to mention, we also had this similar discussion with our Solutions Council during the March meeting. And we'll integrate that feedback into what is submitted later today to Metro as the draft Program Year Five Work Plan. We'll seek ongoing feedback and continue to revisit, sharpen our pencils on our goals and our numbers and ensure that those are the right goals for Program Year Five with the target date of submitting our work plan early next fiscal year. It's due sixty days after our budget is approved by this commission. So, we're eager to get that submitted. But to get there, we have some key questions for this board. First of which being, do these goals achieve the balance we're hoping to strike? Are they achievable and strategic and continuing to advance our mission while considering this challenging revenue landscape that we're in?
Thank you very much for this presentation, both on the amended Year Four Work Plan as well as this proposed Year Five Work Program. And I appreciate how you have clearly identified both the year of this voter-approved ten-year program thus far, as well as the fiscal year. So, I would first ask my colleagues here today if you have any questions on the material, not just the presentation, but the documents provided, as well as these key questions. Who would like to go first?
I will.
Thank you.
It's just, I need a little refresh. What's the dollar amount of adjustments that we're making because of the revenue projection? I can't remember what that number is. Wasn't that like fifteen million?
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to be exact, and I don't have the exact dollar amounts for you. So, I will speak in general terms and then make sure to get the exact changes in the forecast for you. We have all that information really readily available in a slide, I believe. This year, the reduction was from a previously forecasted a hundred and fifteen million dollars roughly, down to about ninety-eight million dollars roughly. And then, next year, our proposed budget is built on the forecasted amount of a rough one hundred and one million dollars. I want to get you the exact numbers, but that's roughly the change in the landscape that we are traversing at this time.
Well, one, the part of this program, it's all the pieces that you've got there on Slide Number Five, as far as the reductions that you're recommending. Eviction prevention is kind of always top of mind to my, to me, and I know that we work with community action to facilitate a lot of that. What does, so, we're reducing that from fourteen hundred to a thousand. What does that mean in dollars? Again, I'm trying to equate what impact financially each one of these reductions have.
Absolutely.
Get kind of a balance in there?
Yep. Thank you for that question, Commissioner. And again, I'll answer in general terms because I don't have the exact numbers. But for the last two and a half years, Washington County has been investing in eviction prevention programming to hold steady or prevent a steep cliff in funding for eviction prevention after ARPA-era funding was expended. So, we used one-time funds from SHS that were over-collected or unanticipated revenues from the first few years to keep that funding going, that those levels of funding going. And we were very clear with our partners. There's Central Cultural and Community Action who've been implementing that continued eviction prevention programming, that those funds would be available until we expired our one-time funding. And that expiration of the funding happened this year. And we actually reached out to our providers to let them know we had to decrease the amount of funding we could commit this year. And that's why you see a goal reduction reflective of the current year's decrease. And that decrease was approximately two million for each provider of a total ten million, roughly ten million-dollar investment for the program this year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's next?
I have, I want to be careful about, my role as a Commissioner is not in the detailed day-to-day operations of programs. I often sometimes don't get the ability to provide input on details, but I do get a lot of community input. And I want to make sure that your team is aware, when I look at the questions you're posing here, I just want to make sure your whole team is aware that a number, not one, but a number of community-based organizations that you partner with on SHS, I think they are very appreciative of the funding that they receive. More than one of them in the last six months has commented directly to me that at times, getting approvals and the timing of getting approval to intervene with people from our county is challenging. And that there frankly, more than one of them, they're, because they partner with the team, they don't want to necessarily, they don't feel comfortable providing that input. Because I actually sort of force people generally to provide feedback directly to the teams they're working with. I don't have a better place or venue to provide that feedback, but I do want that to be something that when you're thinking about the overall program and how you're delivering services, I think you deserve, the team deserves that feedback. And again, I think the organizations are very appreciative of what they're getting. Just sometimes, the speed at which decisions can be made and communicated and approvals received are challenging. And I, as a representative of the community overall, I feel like I need to provide that feedback. So, thank you for hearing that. I don't have other concerns. I appreciate the review you just did with Commissioner Willie about the numbers. That does line up with what I was expecting. I don't have other concerns about the goals. I think they're the right things. I also appreciate the perspective that some of the reduction, like while SHS may be not funding something, that doesn't mean the resource necessarily just disappeared or vaporized from the community. It does mean that that's probably a less sure or a more tenuous future, you know, funding situation. At least, that would be my assumption unless you're wrong. And I'm glad to have a Tigard, former Tigard resident back in the Washington County community.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that feedback. It's helpful to hear it from our board members. And we're also hearing it from our partners and working to refine our, especially our contract processes and invoicing processes. So, there's much more efficiency on our side and certainty for our partners. So, thank you for that.
Great to hear.
If I may add to that, at any point in time, there, your board hears from community partners who, we understand, there's a fear of risk of maybe losing funding if they share critical feedback. We are a learning organization, and at any point in time, if community members, partners, don't feel comfortable meeting directly with our housing staff, you can always refer them directly to me or Assistant County Administrator Marnie Kyle, because I want to underscore, we are a learning organization, and that feedback is incredibly important for us to also hear directly. So, open invitation.
Thank you for that. And I think, you know, what, we hear a lot of things, just in general, as Commissioners. A lot of feedback from all over the place. And I tend to not take one piece of information and just sort of run with it too. So, I want to be respectful of that. But when I do hear a theme, I will make sure I get them to the county administrator if there's a concern about feedback process.
Commissioner Fai?
Thank you, Chair. Team, Justin, team. First, welcome to Oregon, I agree, and welcome to Washington County. Or should I say, welcome back? Great presentation, as always. The question number two, are these the right goals to prioritize, or should other higher priority or measurable goals take precedent in Year Five? You know, I was reflecting back on this question last night about, wait a minute, the team of Washington County, the Supportive Housing Services team, got money, set up programs and infrastructure to house people, and you've done a phenomenal job in that. So, I have no reason to doubt your goals and what you plan to do in Year Five. I think you brought the board on this journey, and you've engaged us, and you presented information to us, and we debated you. We asked you questions, and we asked you to go back. And I think I've sometimes even asked you questions that were, you know, you've said it multiple times. And so, I appreciate what you all do. It's sad to see the fifteen percent cut that's coming our way, because we really need this money. And we're, we've seen the impact, the positive impact it has on people. So, I'm thumbs up on these goals. I do have a heartburn with the eviction prevention, as you can imagine, but I also know that you have that. And that the number you presented was not an easy calculation to put forward, because eviction prevention is the most impactful way to prevent people from housing if they're not outside the streets. So, we'll pay attention and we'll keep you in the loop if we hear anything from the community that are really detrimentally impacted with this going from fourteen hundred to a thousand. But so far, so good. One request I have, and since this topic is about supportive housing services, and I really appreciate the comment you made about the successful transitioning and how you positioned that comment, I was wondering, you know, we've made good, I'm sure we have success stories out there about people who were from the streets to now that are in affordable housing. But how do we get that stories out? And in particular, I'm wondering, you know, the Aloha POD Village was a bit of a process to set up, to bring everyone on board, including our board, including the community, including to you. You know, it took us so many moving parts to really set up the Aloha POD Village, as well as the Cornelius and Hillsborough. And I'm wondering if there's any, if you're tracking the number of people who've transitioned from those POD villages to maybe a supportive, permanent supportive housing services, to then supportive housing services, or if there are some people that actually just went back to the streets. And if you can come back with those data to really tell that success stories and to have some lessons learned around, why did people went back to the streets? Did we not set up the right supportive, you know, supportive wraparound services to really help them stay and get connected to housing? So, I'm just wondering if you can come back another time. Your, you know, thumbs up for me on submitting this part of it. But come back and share with that success stories around the successful transitioning that. And then, we can continue to loop in on, you know, the goals you have for Year Five to the lessons that we're learning from the past.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're right on time and in step with the team's plan with reporting out on successful transitions in our program. So, what you've described is a more granular look at our So what you've described is a more granular look at our transitions out of shelter data point that will be a part of our work plan and our goals this coming year. And we can work to make sure we're illustrating that on a kind of shelter level, so it really makes that information tangible for the board and our community partners and public, of course. Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. I will wrap up. I really appreciate the thoughtful system design that you've all brought forward to us over these years with clear program goals and results. And that includes the capital projects, building those, as well as the operations, plus supporting providers in their systems, for example, in their hiring and retaining their workforce to provide their service, right? And supporting their service delivery. I had the opportunity to attend the Metro webinar yesterday from four to five, and hearing from the National Report, I was reminded of how you have also built in respite care. And we heard earlier about our two new transitional housing projects as well. I want to thank Governor Kotek and the state legislature for not only their leadership, but also their funding commitment that have supported us, particularly these last couple of years, as well as into the future, to ensure that we continue to have appropriate resources to address the needs of our community. Very proud of your work. We have transitioned as an organization across many different aspects of our work, such that we are no longer a county that exports our most vulnerable community members, and that includes no longer exporting our homeless community members. Now, I want to compliment my colleagues. This is not our first presentation on the adjustment of the current year four work program, nor is it the first time that we've talked about the outline for year five and into future years. And I thank you all for your patience. Our team has kept us very well informed, has had many forums for gathering our feedback. I appreciate your three questions. Absolutely, I support these draft goals, as they are definitely implementing a balance of achievable and strategic nature. Yes, these are the right goals, as we know from our multiple discussions. And as to question three, supporting the report submission to Metro, in a moment, I think now is the time for this board to approve the amended year four work program, this being our first week of the fourth quarter for this year four, fiscal year '25, and give our thumbs up to this draft year five work program, so you can continue to flesh it out, all the dollars and cents in terms of what SHS dollars are aiming to fund, as well as the other funding sources that you've mentioned earlier. So I would like to ask my colleagues for a motion to approve the amended year four work program and to give our thumbs up for embracing the draft year five work program, knowing full well there are other details, including the latest status on the finances.
I'll move, Chair Harrington.
Second.
Thank you, colleagues. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. How's that for a minute order there, Board Clerk? Yes, thank you very much. Yes, good job, team. And thank you, Ms. Gentry, for joining our marvelous team here at Washington County. So thank you. Next, we'll move on to our second public comment period for today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their thoughts with the board on any topic they would like for up to five minutes, an individual, 30 minutes in total. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do. Chair Harrington, we have Jill Luttrell and Bob Terry.
Good morning, Ms. Luttrell. Please feel free to start.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Luttrell, and I'm a resident of Washington County. This morning, I would like to read portions from an executive order signed by President Trump on March 25, 2025, preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections. By the authority vested in me as President by the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, it is hereby ordered, Section 1, Purpose and Policy. Free, fair, and honest elections, unmarred by fraud, errors, or suspicion, are fundamental to maintaining our constitutional republic. The right of American citizens to have their votes properly counted and tabulated without illegal dilution is vital to determining the rightful winner of an election. Under the Constitution, state governments must safeguard American elections in compliance with federal laws that protect Americans' voting rights and guard against dilution by illegal voting, discrimination, fraud, and other forms of malfeasance and error. Federal law establishes a uniform election day across the nation for federal elections. It is the policy of my administration to enforce those statutes and require that votes be cast and received by the election date established in law. Several federal laws, including 18 United States Code 1015 and 611, prohibit foreign nationals from registering to vote or voting in federal elections. Additionally, federal laws such as the National Voter Registration Act and the Help America Vote Act require states to maintain an accurate and current statewide list of every legally registered voter in the state. And the Department of Homeland Security is required to share database information with states upon request so they can fulfill this duty. Federal law, 52 United States Code 30121 prohibits foreign nationals from participating in federal, state, or local elections by making any contributions or expenditures. It is the policy of my administration to enforce federal law and to protect the integrity of our election process. That concludes Section 1. Citizens of Washington County insist the State of Oregon, governments follow the Constitution and safeguard American elections by complying with federal laws that protect Americans' voting rights. Please guard our votes against dilution by illegal voting, discrimination, fraud, and any other forms of malfeasance and error. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Luttrell. Go ahead, Mr. Terry.
Well, good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I have made a decision on behalf of you, Madam Chair, and making your decision to give the Pledge of Allegiance today to not give you my report today and incomplete. I will pick it up next week, but in honor of your giving us the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to thank you and the county administrator for making that wise decision with all of you. It's something that makes those of us who are in the service and you're military very proud that you've done that. All the cities, as I said last week or two weeks ago, do do that before they start. I don't know when it does not. So thank you for joining the rest of the county. On other matters, I would like to have had to said something in following Ms. Luttrell, but I'm going to forego that for right now. But I will say, and a bit of humor intended, I might add, that I don't ever remember having this many proclamations done in one commission meeting, and it's unfortunate that it was on April Fool's Day, because I think every one of them were well-deserved and very well-done. And I thank you all for that. And with that, I will say, I yield my time to you, Madam Chair, and I will see you next week.
Right. Was there any other members in the auditorium that we should provide comment at this time? Raise hand or come forward. Sir, please come ahead. Just state your name for the record, and then you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you for hearing me today. My name is Jason Langford, and I'm here to just kind of give you a testimony of my life, what I've witnessed. I grew up here in Oregon. I grew up in St. John's. I grew up in Kitten during the '80s, when there was a lot of racism and a lot of drugs, a lot of crime, a lot of violence. And I witnessed my neighborhood be disintegrated and all of the children around me be misguided and led into patterns of crime and violence and just malfeasance and psychological trauma and depression that they didn't have any idea they were subjected to. And the way that the state decided to handle the problem of our neighborhood was to close down the projects called the Villa and move them all out to Gresham and reorganize and remodel those projects. But they only moved probably 50% of the people. And at that time, Gresham was a very nice suburban neighborhood where grandmas and all kinds of people were lived. It was a destination neighborhood. And over the 15 years, I watched it disintegrate into felonies, crime, drugs. It was like the neighborhood that I used to live in moved there, and it never changed. And we're still dealing with that problem. And what I see as the problem is that we want to segregate this crime or this violence into a section or a community or into a label or an identity within our city. But the bigger problem is more about what these kids are being taught when they're innocent. And these kids' innocence are not being protected. And the more that we allow the innocence of children to be trespassed upon, to be taken advantage of, and to be abused and used as a way to either profit or make money or to manipulate or control them, the more we're going to have these problems in the future. Now, my personal life, I graduated from Roosevelt High School. I got my GED because I'm a fifth-generation carpenter, and I wanted to go and work in an industry that my family had been in for years, for generations. I knew how to remodel a house by the time I was 11. I knew how to re-roof it, how to make a deck, how to landscape, the whole bit, by the time I was 15. So I was motivated. And when I went out to the community to try to find work, there was none there, because my industry was overrun with illegal immigrants. I could not afford to go and even pay for the gas and the tools to go to work. They had an advantage over me. They could live five to six in an apartment for cheap, and I couldn't even afford to pay for the gas or tools to start a job. And so I tried to go to college, but it never really worked out. And I ended up going to the military, and I served from 2001 to September 26th to 2005, those four years. And if you know that timeframe, you know where I served and where I served and how I served. I stood on the gate in San Diego. I watched the border. I saw the community. I saw the psychological trauma that was in my neighborhood down there, but it was just more prevalent. And as I'm getting older, I'm just seeing this contagion of psychological abuse and manipulation spread throughout my country. And I went to war, and that war came back with me. It's not a physical war. It's an emotional and a mental war. And I don't have a chance. I have given up on trying to find work. I don't believe I can ever be a carpenter in my life. I don't ever think I can really be an electrician. I have been pushed away by my own society. I have been marginalized. I have been accused of being a racist. I have been made to feel like I'm not worth anything. I have struggled with suicide and anger and depression for 25 years because of what I witnessed, and my voice has never mattered. But now I'm here, and I'm telling you, if we don't do something to protect the innocence of these children, we will not solve the problems that we are trying to face. They are all symptoms of a deeper issue which starts in our childhood. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Langford.
Is there any other member in the auditorium that should probably comment? Not seeing any others, any members online which should provide public comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic. Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. We'll next move on to board announcements. I'll start with the meeting announcements. Next Tuesday, April 8, 2025, we will start with a work session at 9:00 a.m. We're also adding a Clean Water Services Board of Directors meeting, and that time's certain detail will be known later today. On Monday, April 14, we're having our orientation with our fellow members of our various budget committees at 6:00 p.m. On Tuesday, April 15, we'll start with our work session at 9:00 a.m., followed by the Washington County and Clean Water Services Combined Board Meeting at 10:00 a.m., and then we'll reconvene in work session after that. On Tuesday, April 22, we'll start our work session in the afternoon at 2:00 p.m. and have our combined board meeting starting at 6:30 p.m. And then lastly, on Monday, April 28, I would like to invite all of our community members and service provider partners and local government partners to join us at 6:00 p.m. for an in-person and hybrid meeting, where Ms. Angie will be presenting her proposed budget and her budget message at our committee meeting, Budget Committee meeting, starting at 6:00 p.m. right here in this room physically. Are there any other board announcements, colleagues? No? We will reconvene in our work session at 1:00 p.m. Do we have a motion to adjourn our regular business meeting?
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. That's it for our regular business meeting of today, Tuesday, April 1, 2025. Thank you.